Okay, it's 7 o'clock, so we'll call to order the November 12th, 2021 Danby Select Board Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I dropped the phone, I'm sorry.
Okay, roll call. Haynes. White.
Yeah. I think that's ready.
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Fuller.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Bender. Present. Okay, I will entertain a motion to set the agenda. Under Old Business, I'd like to add Treasurer's Request for Clarification of Benefits. Any other changes to the agenda or additions?
I make a motion to accept to set the agenda.
Okay, motion by Powers, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Fuller. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is set. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of October 21st, 2021, special meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Fuller, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Powers. Any discussion, additions, deletions to the minutes of October 21st? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item of business was a presentation by Barbara Noyes-Polling, but I don't see her here yet. So I guess we'll jump down to, under the planning part, they've asked for approval of an amendment to the contract with the Regional Planning Commission. And it says, "It is hereby agreed by and between the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the town of Danby that the agreement effective January 1st, 2021 shall be modified as follows. The general terms and conditions. The period of performance under this agreement shall be extended to June 30th, 2022, or the completion of tasks detailed in the scope of work, whichever is sooner." Would someone care to move approving that amendment to the agreement?
Now, this is for the flood mitigation, or the hazard, local hazard mitigation?
Right.
So how does that agreement work?
Well, I imagine that Mount Tabor has to approve it also, because it's a joint agreement. And it's just that it's taking longer than they anticipated. So they want to have permission to carry on until June instead of ending in January.
This, we're kind of...
Is this costing us money, or is this just extending?
No, it's just extending the date. And it says, "Except as modified by this agreement, all other provisions of the original agreement shall remain in full force and effect."
But this, back to this, this is the agreement for the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Right up there on the top line.
Green matter for certain updated local mitigation plan. I make a motion that we extend the agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve the amendment which extends the time period of the agreement. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess some. How, I mean, and this kind of, it's a tangent of it, but I want to get it on that, is we never, I've never seen the final, the full plan that they wanted us to review.
Yeah, I sent you an email of the Mount, of Mount Holly and Tinmouth.
Okay, I saw them, I didn't like theirs. So is that what ours is?
Well, you know, we can change it however we want, but that's how those two towns, who have already gone through the whole process, that's...
Now, why did ours not have?
Because we haven't finished the first part yet with the public comment, which Shelley was supposed to be here tonight and tell us whether or not she got any public comments on it. I meant, there's a meeting coming up on Wednesday, I believe is the 17th, to continue that process.
Okay, no, I, I mean, I guess...
And here is a lady that might be able to shed more light on the subject.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry.
Welcome, Barbara. This is Barbara Noyes-Polling, in case anybody doesn't recognize her. So it's a little bit off your topic, but we're talking about the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And I don't know if you're in that loop or not, but...
Really not.
Okay.
Stephanie Burk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And...
Is there anything you want me to pass along?
No, our local Planning Commissioner, who's working with her, was supposed to be here this evening and tell us if she received any public comments, but she's not here, so we can't react to any public comments that may or may not have been received.
Yeah.
And then the second half of it, Tom was asking why the other two parts, which I believe are Part 7 and Part 8 of the plan, he's asking how that's going to look, and Stephanie had sent us the plans that Tinmouth and Mount Holly already finished, which we're at odds with, but we're just wondering, because we just approved, well, we're about to approve extending the amendment of time. It was supposed to be wrapped up on the 1st of January, and now they're asking to have it wrapped up the beginning of June.
So the multi-jurisdictions are those two, and Danby? Are Tinmouth and then?
Well, no. Danby and Mount Tabor are our jurisdiction, but those other two towns have already finished their hazard mitigation plans.
Okay, so that and the multi-jurisdictional things are not really related? The first thing you brought up in this one, and then these sections, and I'm so out of the loop, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Sorry to put you on the spot like that.
So, no, I guess that was a tangent that I didn't mean to go that far into, so, I mean, we can just vote on the extension, which has nothing to do with the actual plan.
Exactly. So any more discussion about approving the extension? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so Barbara, you are just in time to tell us about flood and environmental impacts.
Okay, so I've got one topic of this, I can send more to you.
You can give it to Brad if you'd like, yeah.
You will preview, sure, preview. It is part of the Flower Brook project that Hillary Solomon started about five years ago. It's just, it's been ongoing, so there's been, the Flower Brook starts in Tinmouth and runs through Danby and on into Paulette. There have been some projects that have been done. Purchase Brook is coming up, that started with this project, and we had to go and expand the scope to get some extra money from the Lake Champlain Basin Program. There's been some driveway culverts have been done, so various projects around, looking at the watershed as a whole. And then we thought we would expand that to include not only flooding, but some of the things we're noticing with warmer temperatures and more severe weather. So we thought we'd do a workbook with the three towns, we have an advisory group from the three towns, and we started with a survey of what impacts they are noticing, especially the more extreme weather. And they came up with seven of those, starting with like tics and other vector borne illnesses that are affecting residents, more frequent heavy precipitation, and more frequent drought conditions, negative financial impact on cold weather recreation, changes to emergency response, increased maintenance for town roads, reduced soil moisture or drought that's affecting some area farmers, and some loss of forest habitat. So we took those seven impacts that were identified by residents in those three towns in the watershed, and then said, what can we do about them? Eleven pages later, we came up, after looking at some of the opportunities and some of the obstacles and things like that, about 10 pages in, we're looking at some actual action items that can be taken by the towns themselves. So that we're kind of like focusing, instead of globally, or nationally, or the state, we're looking at what's going on locally and what might be done locally. So all of this is in that workbook, in addition to some other suggestions about maybe putting more into capital improvement funds, maybe changing the town plan in places. And so it's essentially finished, although it's in a state now that can be turned over to the town to take the suggestions and do what you want with them, assign people to do them, assign timeframes, or, you know, take them all, take a few of them, or whatever you decide. And so we're going back to the three towns with this workbook and this suggestion that they take the workbook and select boards are probably too busy to do this stuff, but maybe the Planning Commission might be a good place to, you know, assign them the task of looking at it, seeing if it fits into what Danby is thinking and what Danby wants to do. So that's where we are right now. And Hillary and/or I can help with the next step, if you'd like, as well, if it goes to the Planning Commission and they want some guidance or some explanation of why, you know, what does this mean, and all that kind of stuff. So there's plenty of detail there, but we wanted to put plenty in there and plenty options for towns, if you want to tackle any of those seven things that people say they are noticing already, and just see where you want to go from there.
I guess my only thing is, I haven't seen any of it, I don't know if you have, and to have any answers or anything, I mean, we appreciate you bringing it in person, but I guess without even looking at this, it's tough to say what direction I personally, and I don't know if anybody else on the board has anything, and I guess my thought is, if we get a chance to look at it, we could...
Yeah, I think we should look at it, and I think then we should send it to the Planning Commission.
Right.
Yeah, and I can...
Probably look at it before next meeting, then we could talk about something around to the Planning Commission, because our next meeting isn't until January.
January.
Okay. Do you want digital versions of that?
I'm sorry.
Do you want digital versions of that?
I, it doesn't matter, I mean, we can either make copies of this and scan them in ourselves, I mean, that's, no, one copy will suffice to get us all where...
Yeah, just to give you an example of, you know, the one impact they came up with regarding town roads, you know, the solutions are stormproof, the roads, and related to drainage, clean drainage ditches and culverts, the loss of forest habitat, identify critical areas for the town that you would like to protect if there was an insect infestation, or, God forbid, like, you know, windstorms coming through. So those are the kind of things that we came up with to address those seven impacts that the local people came up with. And, yeah, then there's a list of general suggestions for the town to go about this, as opposed to addressing those seven directly.
How long did you, I mean, I guess you're saying there was local input on it? I personally didn't see any, how broad an area did you?
We had, we had an advisory board that we've had with this project, this Flower Brook project, which started like five years ago, we've had this advisory group, people, some people have come and gone, but basically it's been the same group. So that's who we've been working with.
And how did you, what's the advisory group? Is it, what, who does that consist of? I mean, people of the town, or people of...
We contacted the towns and asked who might be interested.
Yeah.
And at the time, Lynn was the chair here. And there were some watershed groups that we contacted, or people who work in that area, scientists, that we included as well. So, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I think that probably best describes who's been sitting on that.
So the recommendations came from that group?
The advisory group, yes.
And how many people were on that group?
Oh, probably the ones working on this, it was a group of about a dozen people, yeah. And we tried to get the survey to figure out what the impacts people were noticing, we tried to get that as widespread as possible. We, you know, we just tried, it's just...
Did you send it out around, or how did you throw your survey?
Yes, we sent it through the advisory group to, for them to help us disseminate that.
And how many, like, did you know the number from Danby that responded, or Tinmouth, or...
There was just, there was just a few from each town.
Yeah.
That responded. It's kind of new stuff.
Yeah, and a lot of people, if they don't hear about it, or don't take the time, it's, yeah, it's unfortunate that you don't always get response.
Yeah, and a new way of thinking about things, too. It's like, you know, do we wait for the state to kind of tell us what to do? Well, you know, with all this bad weather, or do something about ourselves, and instead do something about ourselves, it's probably new to folks. And it was a new concept, we knew it was, we knew it was, you know, going to be different, but we thought these three towns, working with them, would be a good exercise to see how it would pull together, and it worked.
And your biggest concern, or your biggest thing that you're trying to do is the protection of Flower Brook, is the way this is, is what this is for?
The overall goal was to get towns in a watershed to work together and to think together about what needed to be do, needed to be done about flooding, and in this case, you know, other environmental concerns. And hopefully, they could work together and also not make the problem, anything worse for the community downstream.
Right.
You know, so that a watershed approach would be used for a lot of decisions the town would make, that might have something to do with Flower Brook.
Now, I read the report, and I think it was, was it the USDA that did the, on the Flower Brook, at some point, I've read it, and it was published probably quite a few years back now, and it spoke about the temperature increase and stuff, and some of the reasons they were thinking that could have caused it.
Yeah, Hillary is the scientist, so she'd know, probably know more about that than I, but yes, yes, you know, there is data being collected.
Okay, well, we'll get copies out to the select board and review it, and then we'll talk about it again at our December meeting, and it sounds like we'll then send it to the Planning Commission.
Okay, that sounds good. If you have any questions, don't...
I don't.
Or at your next meeting, if you come up with some questions.
Well, I think that will be the thing, is I'm sure after we all read it, we may, and do you have your email on there, or is there a contact that maybe? Because I guess to facilitate it, is if we could email you some questions that you don't have to answer immediately, that you could have for our next meeting?
Yeah.
That would, that would help kind of facilitate this whole thing, because I know when I'm reading it at night or something, trying to actually get my, you know, see what it's saying, that I jot down a few notes and...
Yeah, I can include your email.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and just keep in mind, it's a workbook, and it's not like, here are, here are the things we think we should do. It's like throwing everything at the wall, throwing spaghetti at the wall. Here's, here's the seven impacts, and here are a number of things that could be done for each one of those. So, you know, being a workbook, you go in and say, eh, this is not going to work in Danby, or, you know, and take that...
Well, you have to start somewhere with everything, so...
Yeah, yeah, more is better at that point, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Appreciate you coming.
If you decide you want me here in December, I'll be glad to come down.
We'll see how it goes, I think that, you know, we can handle a lot of it through the emails and save you a little trip.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, we appreciate you down.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Thank you, get home safely.
Making this up, adding it to the agenda. I'm sure you're, I'm sure you're busy and...
Well, next month, we'll be busy, we'll be working on budget, and we have a couple other things, so, but I don't think that's going to take a great deal of time to address this. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the topic of virtual meetings. Does anybody care to introduce a motion? There's a motion by Doug White to go with virtual meetings, is there a second?
Well, same up, if we don't have it, we're going to put it on, or it's voted on, and murdered. Because I'm, there's enough signatures, so we've got to have it voted on and murdered. So if they don't have it now, we'll have it murdered.
Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. Next, we'll move on to the Road Commissioners' Report.
I guess the first thing I wanted to discuss was just the, we've got our salt contracts, or our salt, and we have three companies that are, we have American Rock Salt, Morton's, and Cargill. And I, I guess for, for a quality issue, I'd like to go with the one in the middle on the pricing. Over the full year, it'll probably cost us roughly $2,000, $2,400 more to go with the middle price. And they're a little more local for us to get product from out of Rutland, and it's covered salt. So I guess I'd look for the board to support that.
What was the company's name?
Ah, it's Cargill. And Morton Salt was the other, and American Rock Salt was the third.
Is there a motion to award the salt supply to Cargill?
I'll make a motion to use Cargill.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of awarding the contract to Cargill, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll let you deal with that, I'll hand you, or you got a copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Our new employee, Randy Young, is started. He started last week. All our winter sand is put up for the year. We have our winter blades all in for the year, so we have our inventory of them. And I guess my next thing that I wanted to talk to the board about is hiring a part-time winter guy that's a 40-hour-a-week guy, you know, obviously he'll work the overtime when, but right now, since we are still short the third guy, and we're having trouble finding anyone for the road foreman position, that we just hire a third worker guy for now. And we do that, make that position a full-time job until April 1st is probably a good... Are you still on the phone, Doug? Could you hear me on that?
I can't make out too much you're saying, but I'm recording most of this meeting, so you're trying to see how bad it is on this end, but I've had them on other, told them meet, and if we did have, we could understand it then. And I don't know why the hell we can't go back to that, Facebook for a frigging year, and it'd be a hell of a lot better for me, because I ain't going down here and all, you had 500 responses today.
500, boy.
Okay, this is off the subject, we're talking about hiring a part-time winter person.
You're changing the subject. You're, I'm, you're following your meeting.
You were asked what you thought about hiring a part-time winter person on the road crew. Do you have anything to say to that?
No, not yet.
Okay, well, I guess what I would like to do is advertise it and... Okay, well, I guess what I would like to do is advertise it, and let's do a short advertising period, and get somebody hired maybe by the 1st of December, or roughly thereof.
So, you want to advertise a part-time position?
Yep.
Beginning 12/1 to April 1?
Yes.
Would somebody care to make a motion to that effect?
Well, if we do, I hope we hire somebody that's got experience in plowing.
Right.
I mean, I hope we don't have to hire anybody that's applying for a job.
No, and that's the thing, is, I mean, we're looking for someone who can step in, you know, from the construction field, who doesn't want to go on unemployment this year, and, you know, can fill in. I mean, the nice thing is, I mean, if the weather cooperates, Doug, I'd like to see us get caught up on the brush cutting that we weren't able to get done this summer. They, just back to a two-man crew, they've started quite a bit, so I think if we get the third guy on, we maybe can, you know, salvage some of this year's brush cutting.
Okay, so did I hear somebody move this?
I'll make a motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion to hire a part-time person from December 1st until April 1st, and the advertisement should say that plowing experience is required.
I think they should have, yeah, yeah, truck driving, plowing experience, yeah. So, obviously, a CDL, I mean, basically the same stuff that we require for any employee.
Basically, basically.
Yeah, it'll be the same, it'll be the same advertisement that we just had out for the, for the position, and it's just going to have a term, you know, not a full-time, okay? So, we can use that same advertisement.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
What I'd like to know is now, what we're going to do about this damn union, anybody gets hired for three months and works 40 hours a week during the union, and once you get them in the union, you can't get rid of them like that.
Well, if we hire them until April 1st, we can get rid of them April 1st. I mean, that's, that's the thing, is the union doesn't force you to keep someone longer than what the term of the deal is.
I hope you check with the union and make sure that we can do that, because otherwise, we're going to be screwed.
Yes, yeah. No, I've spoke with Ray.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the treasurer's request for clarification of benefits. Jennifer.
What's the benefits?
Um, I don't know necessarily if that's what it's about. I received some 2022 forms for like health insurance, retirement, that needs to be filled out, and then I realized, I'm not sure what positions I need to give these forms to. So, I thought it'd be a good idea to make a list of all the physicians, and whether they qualify for the benefit or not, just so we have a document.
And you have that list, Brad?
I do.
And I mean, we should be able to go over it fairly quickly.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's the, the road crew, who are union members, the dump attendant, town clerk, and the town treasurer.
Now, I guess the only thing that, and I'm not sure, because I guess, I'm sorry, I should have brought the contract with me, is any of the new employees after certain days that don't work a certain number of hours are not, don't qualify, correct? Or is, is that something that I, I mean, I don't want to waste two hours of the meeting going through the contract on this, but I just wanted to make sure that what we're.
The union contract, that anybody that don't work 40 hours a week, they're not going to get benefits and retirement. The employees that work 40 hours a week at the road crew, do get it.
Now, what, what a.
Cliffy, and Clack, they don't get benefits, and they don't get retirement, because they don't work 40 hours a week. That's what it says in the union contract, good point. I've heard it a dozen times.
It says all part-time employees hired prior to June 30th, 2015, are eligible for pro-rated participation and health insurance benefits.
And, and that was prior to 2015, so I guess where I'm going with this is, I don't want to make this a blanket thing, because the problem is, our dump attendant wouldn't be considered full-time after Cliffy retires or something, and we, we could end up, we want to make sure that we're clear on this, that, that.
Why don't we just have a talk with our lawyer, Doug's union contract? Someone said the union contract's up for, and he worked for places at Ryan's Snep and Carbone in Rockville, at John's, the John's.
Well, I think, I think what she's looking for right now, Doug, is she, she just wanted to make sure who actually qualified at this moment.
Well, who else would I just wrote through? Janice, Janice, the thing, I'm not sure, but I know Cliffy and Clack all qualify for benefits.
Correct.
If they don't work 40 hours a week, they don't get them.
That's right, and I agree with that, and I agree with you, Doug.
I mean, what's, what's Janice's problem?
Well, what she's trying to do, she's just trying to get it clarified in their worksheets, and it would be, or in their folders.
She's, she's getting the, the select board, and now she's figuring out, figuring out the select board.
That's why she's asking the select board, Doug.
Yeah, well.
I hate.
The union contract, you just want to add, ask nothing.
So, I guess my, my thought is that I don't want to finish this completely without adding another subcategory, and not that I want to kick this can down the road, but it won't kill you if we finalize it next meeting.
The only thing is, is like the health insurance and the plowing case stuff has to be handed in, in the next month, so that we can get everything set up for the 2022.
Okay, but that's your, your road crew in, and the clerk is under that because of grandfathered?
Yeah, she was here prior to.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it.
So.
So, you've got two members of the road crew, and you've got the clerk.
Who Cliffy hired.
Cliffy was prior to 2015.
But he's part-time.
Yeah, but it says prior to 6, June of 2015, part-time employees would be offered prorated benefits. So, was he hired before that? That was my question, what was his hire date?
Yeah, no, it was pre-2000. I mean, I guess the only thing you would have to clarify, but I mean, I would have a hard time, because he took over after.
Raymond?
Raymond, right.
Oh, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
I think Raymond was probably, what, 2010?
Raymond was after Mr. Green?
Mr. Corey.
Mr. Corey.
Jeff Corey.
No, Raymond was after Neil McCullough.
Yeah, so he's been here a while.
Where did Neil do that, yeah?
Yeah, I don't want to try to bore everybody with our recollections.
We're just curious, that was all.
Okay, so, are, we gonna, I mean, we, we can definitely, the road crew guys, the dump attendant, since he is the, and the clerk, because she was grandfathered in. The assistant is no, the treasurer is no, the listers are no, the auditors are no.
You can write that right on.
Yeah.
So, basically, anything under the assistant town clerk is no.
Correct.
Correct.
And right now, the assistant town clerk is receiving her retirement benefit and life insurance.
She should be.
So, that was after 2015. And when was she, who hired her?
The clerk.
Janice. But the board must have.
No, the town clerk and the town treasurer have the privilege of hiring their own assistants. We have nothing to do with that, other than setting the salary.
So, Doug, you were on the board then, what was the, do you know why she was given that?
Who was getting what?
Why the assistant has the retirement?
She doesn't have a retirement. Assistant doesn't have retirement, and she doesn't have no benefits.
She is receiving retirement?
Yes, she is.
She shouldn't, she shouldn't be getting no retirement, she shouldn't be getting no benefits, she's not a 40-hour-a-work.
Yeah, I guess we'll have to.
Can you research that and find out when she started getting the?
She started getting it, she should, she worked closely.
Um, based on my review of the retirement, it looks like she's been receiving it all along.
Hmm.
I think we got this for a whole month after we come to say, I really don't think we can do anything about this.
Well, I think we answered the most part that she needed, Doug, because she was, I mean, we know that the road crew guys are getting it, and we know that the clerk, and we know that Cliffy has the prorated part of it, and those are the only four that she really needed, because the retirement, is that anything that has to be filed right off?
Um, there's paperwork for them to fill out.
That has to be in before next meeting?
I think it's sooner rather than later, and I don't have the form. It's in the vault.
Yeah, according to the breakdown Jen gave us, Collette's stuff all started in If I'm reading that right.
I mean, we can't do anything about it right now, I mean, other than, we're going to have to look into it, and so we can't give you an answer on Collette.
Started in 2015. I don't know what the date was, but that fiscal year.
And it was prior to January of 20?
Bobby received in the same year. So, I don't know Collette's hire date, if it was after 6/30.
So, if it was before 6/30, she actually qualified?
Yes. So, we would need Collette's hire date to know on that.
Okay, so, on Monday, Jennifer, can you find out when her hire date was?
Yes.
In the contract, pretty much dictates it from there.
Exactly.
Yeah, so if it was previous, she was entitled to it, if not, she wasn't. Unless there's some sort of side agreement that was performed by the board at the time, which I'm not asking.
She was hired before 6/30, 15. She's grandfathered, right?
Right.
Anything else, Jennifer?
Okay, so, just to clarify, I'm going to get the road crew, the sheets, the dump attendant, and the town clerk.
Yeah, we're going to give you a copy of it, too, so you got it in writing from us, so you can, you can hold us on it.
Okay.
After I get the minutes done, I will give you this document on Monday.
Perfect. Do you guys want to talk about the retirement in this meeting, or would you like to schedule something else?
We can, we can bring it up for, I mean, you go ahead and bring it up, it's under, under.
Okay, so, the union contract states that the town is supposed to be contributing 6% of an employee's salary to the retirement plan, and after some review, it looks like there are some employees that have not been receiving that benefit. So, and I'm not sure if they qualify, or if they do not qualify, so I sent you a spreadsheet that showed who I thought should have been receiving the benefit.
Well, Paul, we didn't want to do nothing with that, we tried, we didn't want to contribute at all to it, and I think that's what's kicking in so much. And Paul, we didn't want to.
Well, the union contract does not say that the employee has to contribute to the plan in order to receive the benefit.
I guess the only thing that Doug's point, to his point, is if he was, and even though he didn't have, he still had to sign up for it and request it. So, I mean, there's some gray area here that we're talking about, that he refused to sign up for it, even though he wasn't going to put anything into it, the town would have. So, at that point, it makes the town ineligible to put it in, because we can't do it without his signature.
Request.
Well, it's not even a request, all he's got to do, he would have had to sign off, or just sign for the account. I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, you, you really can't force somebody to take free money with it.
Right. You can lead the horse to water, but you can't make it drink.
So, I guess my, my thought is, the gray area there is, even though he was entitled to it, he didn't, and he refused it, because I think everybody's had a conversation with him, and that he didn't like it at the time, that, I, I mean, there's an awful gray area here, and I think that's as far as I think we can go. You got anything else on that, Doug?
No, I didn't.
I would say leave it alone.
What's that?
I would say leave it alone.
Yeah, leave it alone, that's what I say.
Um, I mean, my problem is, all he had to do was sign for the thing, and so I don't know where we, where our liabilities cut off, you know, where our, I mean, even though he was entitled to it, he refused to sign for it, as far as I know.
That's right, well, it's his, it's his loss.
Um, I mean, I guess we could do under executive session if him and the, they want to discuss it farther, but I, I'm not sure how we're, you know.
I think, I think what we should, though, you should like to tell our lawyer, are you and Mike, find out what you're doing, going out with all that. Don't just take what Janice said, because I don't know. I think we ought to get a little, uh, advice from our, our new lawyer. Because, you know, we decide on something, we might cost us a lot of money, I can't lie on you.
Well, I don't think, you know, we're not, we're not going to decide on anything till we get it straightened out. I mean, it's either, it's either that or not, I mean, there's.
Yeah, we're not going to change the contract.
Yeah, we're not going to change the contract, so it's.
No, we can't. We can't change it.
Right.
But as far, as far as us pursuing it, I don't see that we are obligated to pursue it any farther.
Correct.
Unless anybody else wants to.
No. No. Okay, anything else before we move on?
Um, on the retirement, like since our employees do qualify for this 6%, should I be giving the forms for the 2022 year?
I would, yes.
That's the here, who, like, who figured out what's going on? Are you doing that?
Okay.
No, I, I...
Well, they, the only one we have to find anything out about is when the assistant town clerk was hired. The rest of them are clearly entitled to it. Okay, so you'll find out when she was hired and then we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Okay, is that it?
Um, did you guys have a chance to look at the outside auditor set some questions on like budget versus actual?
Well, I went over that with you as far as the things that I could shed light on.
And then I sent it out to like the rest of the board just to see if they have any comments to add.
Um, and, and...
I looked at it. I...
And this is, you're, you're wondering the actual, the auditor's questions on, um...
The one thing was about the paving, why we didn't...
Yeah, but we have the legal that was budgeted and, and then the county waste, that, that part we're discussing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And the only thing that, you know, I wasn't on the board then, so none of the fiscal 21 budget is anything I can respond to.
Okay.
Doug?
Yeah, well...
Did you get a copy of that, what the auditor's questions were?
No.
It was included in the email that I sent at the beginning of the week?
I didn't see it out there.
Okay, I will send it to you now. Where I do?
It's what's staying. A lot of times that's what it goes to. A lot's supposed to stay there.
Well, why don't, there's only like five questions. Why don't you just mention them and Doug can tell you if he has any reaction to it?
So the outside auditors were looking at the fiscal 21 budget to actual and then the fiscal 22 budget, just to get a better understanding of the spending and why we were off budget, basically. So on highlighter treatment, the fiscal 21 budget was $105,000 and we only spent $78,000. The fiscal 22 budget was $115,000. Do you know why there was a, we spent less than budget and then we budgeted more for this year?
Well, we didn't spend a lot this year because we didn't do a lot of blacktoping for lunch.
Was the assumption that we were gonna do more blacktopping in fiscal 2022?
Well, 2021, we're supposed to do some, we set a budget so we do so much blacktopping every year.
Okay.
And this year, I don't think we did any. I, I don't, I don't think they did, Doug.
But that's our, that's our 22 budget. I mean, I guess we could have spent some, but, you know, our, we, we did our paving last fall for the 21 budget.
Okay.
And, and they're asking why we didn't spend all of it, which I, I think Paul had told me that there was no more left to spend when we were doing the last projects, so...
Okay, um, on crack ceiling, we budgeted $10,000 in 2021. We didn't spend anything and we budgeted $10,000 in 2022. Do you have any comments on that, Doug?
We, uh, no.
Okay. Um, we talked about the wind gas, winter sand. We budgeted $50,000 in 2021. Actual was $40,000. This year, we budgeted $55,000.
But...
You never know how it's gonna use, like, do that or whatnot. You don't know.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I mean, that makes sense is that you can't predict the winter.
And it's better, I think, to budget more than not.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, my last thing is the internal auditors have not been into audit. And I spoke to the outside auditors and they said that I was not supposed to be reconciling the bank statement because I'm one having checks and deposits and doing actual deposits. So I did reconcile July in August before I learned this. And so I have September and October that have not been reconciled yet.
Okay, so when we last spoke, you said one of the auditors was supposed to meet with you, I believe it was today, right?
Um, actually, it was in October. Tonight, I gave her my cell phone number and told her to call me anytime. And we would set it up to suit her schedule.
Okay, so nobody has responded, nobody's come in?
No.
Well, I think then if it meets with the approval of the select board, I need to send a letter to the auditors informing them that they are not doing the job they were elected to do and ask them to either immediately start doing the job or to give us their letters of resignation that we can appoint somebody.
I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll second it.
I'm there, yeah.
What?
Still here. I'm on the job.
No, we're, we're still here. I'm just trying to write it all down since I have the job of taking minutes as well. So the motion is for Bender to send a letter to the elected auditors saying that they have not fulfilled their duties and they either need to do that immediately or give us a letter of resignation that we can have somebody do what is required by statute. Any discussion on that?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries unanimously. I will do that on Monday. Any new business?
I think I'm done.
If there's no new business, we'll move on to public comment. Any public comment?
No.
If there's no public comment, we'll move on to Mike's favorite motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn by powers. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Fuller. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned at eight, or eight o'clock.